Testing one, two.
Without check, 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 check. So there's no reverb. Check, 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 check. Check one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Check. Is this going out live? Should we listen over here? Check. How about on Facebook? One, two, three, four. Audio test. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So that's just someone Zoom that's on.
You can't hear any echo?
So now we know there's no.
Good evening, folks. I'm your moderator, Bob Hiss, and welcome to night two of our special Spring 2020 Town Meeting. So I'll call the meeting back into order. Just a couple preliminaries. A few things. This is a art. We have two articles tonight. Remember, we're going to start with four and then go back to article two. I know there's a lot of discussion in town about Article Two, and things may tend to get heated. So but I know this is a respectful group and will respect one another as neighbors and friends. Just a reminder, I noticed on reflection that after Monday night, we started to slip back to the habit of using referring to members by name rather than the speaker, the prior speaker, the previous speaker, something like that. And if you're complimenting someone, that's one thing. But if we could have generally avoid personal names when criticizing or disagreeing, I think it helps cool things down and just makes for a well-run and efficient town meeting. With that, I'd like to just turn it over, recognize the Select Board Chair Katie Conlon, who has a short announcement, and then we'll get into Article Four.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, Town Meeting Members. Katie Conlon, Chair of the Select Board and Town Meeting Member from Precinct Three. We wanted to take the opportunity tonight to let Town Meeting Members know that although our bylaws require the May Annual Town Meeting to be held on the first Monday in May, which would be May 2nd, state law allows the Select Board to postpone, to vote to postpone Town Meeting to a later date in May or June. And we have had a discussion this evening about doing that. We are still very much deep in the budget process for the next fiscal year. Unfortunately, we have not yet had free cash certified by the State Department of Revenue. And we have the team of our new interim Town Administrator, retired former Town Administrator Anne Marie Fagan, working along with our Finance Director, Town Accountant Karen Preval, and Assistant Superintendent Amy Dexter, all hard at work on the budget during the past year. I think everyone knows we've had significant amount of transition at Town Hall and specifically in the Select Board Office and in the Accounting Office. There's still a considerable amount of work to be done. And we had not only a transition in the accountant role, we had an interim between the two permanent Town Accountants, and everyone does things a little bit differently, and that's led to some requests for additional information and for us to go back and check things and respond to inquiries from the Department of Revenue. So free cash is going to be particularly important this year. Every year is a tough budget year, but we've identified some items in the school and other town budgets that might benefit from the use of one-time funds. So we really would like to get free cash certified before we can move forward into the final stages of the budget. The good news is that the Ms. Fagan, working with Ms. Preval and Ms. Dexter and the Finance Committees of the Select Board and the School Committee, have been able to reduce the gap from approximately $1.3 million to $350,000. So we've made considerable progress. But it would help us considerably if we can get free cash certified, and we know this is an inconvenience. We're going to be voting officially at our meeting on the 23rd, or a date certain. We're hoping we'll have more information between now and then from the Department of Revenue. We're targeting potentially May 16th, which is a Monday evening, two weeks after the annual Town Meeting would normally have started. We'll confirm that date next week, and once we have a date certain, we will blast it out through the Town Email Distribution and through social media and get the word out probably through the Town Clerk's Office to all of the Town Meeting Members. So we thank you for your patience, and we look forward to seeing you in May after tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, if the group remembers, we'll go to Article Four. Now, I'll, since we're trying to get through things tonight, I'll, unless I see an objection in the chat window, I'll waive the reading of Article Four. Mr. Malick can tell me if we have an objection in the chat. Okay, I don't think we need that. I'll just weigh it on my authority unless someone objects. Seeing no objection. Very good. With that, on Article Four, I'm going to recommend that we go to the Select Board. I'm going to recognize Arthur Doyle, Mr. Doyle. Chair Conlon, I think you wanted to explain first and then over to Mr. Doyle, right?
Mr. Moderator, yes, I was going to ask you to recognize Mr. Doyle, who's the Vice Chair of the Board, to speak to this article. Because it's a bonding article, and I work for the law firm that serves as the town's bond counsel, I recuse myself from the board's discussion of this article. So thank you very much.
Pardon me. We did have a member that objected, so rather than, I think a vote would take a little longer on this one. It'll be shorter on Article Two, but I'll read this one. Recommended that the town vote to appropriate $125,000 to pay the cost of designing and construction sewer lines to provide municipal sewage disposal for Randolph Avenue between Artwell Street and Gun Hill Street, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. Said product to be subject to assessment of betterments for a portion of the cost of said project in accordance with the provisions of Chapters 80 and 83 of the Mass General Law. And that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 71 of the Mass General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 20 of the Mass General Law, is any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of suspender notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. And that the Select Board is authorized to purchase, take by eminent domain, or otherwise acquire easements in land necessary to carry out the purposes of this vote. I should have been the FedEx ad guy. So with that, we'll go to Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. After Doyle, Select Board, Precinct Seven Member. Article Four represents a longstanding infrastructure need, now able to be resolved with a collaboration of the town and the nine homeowners in the identified section of Randolph Avenue. This can be accomplished through the proposed supplementation of the original sewer betterment appropriation for that location as contained in the article and as described in the comment of the Warrant Committee. At this time, Mr. Moderator, may I ask that Milton's Director of Public Works, Mr. Chase Berkeley, be recognized to speak to the article?
Yes, please. Mr. Berkeley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everybody. Chase Berkeley, Director of Public Works. Yes, so this, and thank you, Mr. Doyle, your introduction was spot on. This article is a continuation of the previous article approved in the Special Town Meeting in 2019. So following that appropriation, supported by Town Meeting, the Engineering Department secured the services of a design consultant to begin the work of designing a sewer system expansion along this section of Randolph Avenue. And in the midst of that, it was discovered that there was a lot of subsurface rock and difficult excavation. And then working with the residents along this corridor and talking to them about abandoning their existing cesspools and septic systems, it became evident that the will of the group was to include all work to both abandon the existing systems and construct a new public sewer and connect all of the homes to it. So essentially, the scope of the project and the difficulty of the project greatly increased from the original assumptions and necessitated additional funding in order to complete it.
All set, Mr. Berkeley?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. With that, we will proceed. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? I see two, three. Ms. Agostino, Mr. McCurdy, O'Halloran, and Ms. Clark. Ms. Agostino, you're recognized.
Mr. Moderator, I had voiced an objection regarding the closed captioning, which the Milton Access TV was going to provide tonight. If you read the note from the Town IT Specialist. However, there is a backup option that I've asked the IT Specialist. It's Zoom actually has a closed captioning feature, and if he can locate that, I just want to raise the point that if he can locate that feature and turn it on, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Agostino, I have found that, and it says closed captioning requires a third-party API token, which is a third-party just caption.
I couldn't hear that at all. It was all static. Who's, who's speaking?
Just a minute.
Mr. Moderator?
Why don't I have, Jean, you want to come up to my mic here and talk?
Ms. Agostino, I've actually tried the closed captioning, and the new Zoom requires a third-party application that is paid for, and we do not have that, so it does not do live transcripts.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
So I understand he can't get the third-party live transcript. However, Milton Access, as we all know, purchased the equipment to be able to provide closed captioning. If it's not doable, then we need to get it doable. Many residents had come to the Commission. The Commission spent a whole year on that, getting it available last year, so we appreciate this being worked on prior to any future public meetings for the residents who have hearing loss, complete hearing loss, or even partial. Thank you very much for your time.
Yep, no, it's an important point. Jean, would you just explain how we do have some closed captioning out there?
Do you have some closed captioning? The closed captioning you're speaking of and the piece of equipment you're speaking of is for live broadcast on Comcast Eight and RCN. It does a live transcript there. Also, if you watch on Facebook and you watch on our VOD, you can clips, you can click closed captioning and they will show up. There will be a delay. Just be aware.
Okay, so we have it on the live TV broadcast. We have it on facebook.com, and we have it on the Milton Access. The live, the livestream on Milton Access on the web. Okay, so we've got three vehicles. All right. Good. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, can you just let the public know which channels that would be?
Comcast Eight and RCN Three.
Thank you.
Welcome. With that, I see Mr. McCurdy, O'Halloran, Ms. Clark, and Ms. Simons or Simmons. Pardon me, Mr. McCurdy, you're recognized.
Steve McCurdy, Precinct Seven. I see that the language says that the project is subject to assessment of betterments for a portion of the cost of the project. And I'm wondering what that portion of the cost of the project will be, that will be gathered back through the betterments.
Okay. If okay with the Select Board, I think, Mr. Berkeley, you have those numbers.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the two-thirds of the cost of the project will be assessed to the residents.
Thank you. That I am in support of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I see Mr. O'Halloran, you're recognized.
Mr. Moderator, good evening. Brian O'Halloran, Precinct Three. Of the nine properties mentioned in this article, do we know if any of them are either owned or operated by Milton Academy?
Again, Mr. Berkeley, do you have that information?
Yes, I do. No, there, there are no Milton Academy-owned properties in this segment.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Ms. Clark, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jill Clark, Precinct Four. I, I, I stand in support of this article. I think it is only reasonable that the town offer all of us paying property taxes, the same benefits, including access to the municipal sewer. So I'm glad to see this go forward. My question is, given the benefits to the town, which are also laid out in the comment in the warrant, that this, you know, there are significant environmental benefits to moving away from cesspools and septic, and also the, the fees that would be collected from the, these households in sewer costs. How is it determined that two-thirds of the cost of this project would be borne by the nine residents? It's a, it's a pretty steep amount for a small number of folks. How is that amount reached?
Okay. Mr. Berkeley, can you help us with that?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. So two-thirds is a common amount for sewer betterments in the Commonwealth of the cost sharing. It relates to a couple of things. So one is that this is a specific benefit for these properties. So distributing those costs across the bound, where only a specific benefit is being created, is not in one-to-one equal benefit. So if we say we're building a treatment plant, and then we're treating the entire town sewer system, everyone would benefit from that. In this case, there are very specific properties that are only receiving this benefit, so the law allows you to assess increased amount rather than an equal across all parties. And the second reason is, this is also following previous betterments that Milton has done and used that same two-thirds ratio for cost sharing.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. And now, Ms. Simons, I see you're the last hand up.
Yes, I'm Becky Simons. I'm from Precinct Five, and I became a Town Meeting Member last year, and I'm not fully aware of the 2019 article in the discussion. My question is, did the neighbors or the town initiate the sewer betterment in this article? And what is the history of the sewer betterments in Milton, spearheaded by the town? I am aware of neighbors on Brushhill Road where I live having to bear the cost of tying in with town sewer, independent of any town involvement.
Thank you. Mr. Berkeley, can you help us with that?
Yes, so the first part of the question, Mr. Moderator, remind me the, so.
Did Milton or the, rather, did the neighbors or the town initiate this request?
Thank you. Sorry. So the town received a petition from these neighbors that initiated exploring the possibility of expanding the sewer system up Randolph Ave to collect sewage from these properties. So that came from the residents. This was not a town initiative originally. And into the second question, historical betterment. So the most recent was 2006 of the Woodland Road area where a sewer system was installed, along with the pumping necessary to get it into there, and prior to that, Forbes Avenue in 1998. So those are the two most recent projects that were similar in nature.
Did that get to your question, Ms. Simons?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Last, I see Mr. Walker. Sure, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Ten. Just building on Ms. Simon's question a bit. So is the process that if neighbors request, they might actually be able to cost share, but if they don't, then they have to bear the full cost?
Mr. Berkeley? Do you know that one, or the Select Board, if not?
I'll take it if they'd like me to. Yeah. So the difference here is we're, we're not just connecting homes, we're expanding the public collection system. So we're installing a new public main up the street that didn't previously exist. So the costs are distributed across all those properties to connect when a new residence or developed property connects to a pipe that's already existing in the, in the ground, that is a specific fee that they're responsible for in its entirety. So this is a common effort between both the town and the residents when we're expanding the system.
Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Simons, your hand is still up. Is that an echo from before, or do you have an additional? Have you re-raised it? I see no other speakers, so Ms. Simons, you can ask another question, and then we'll.
Yeah, I just wanted to add another question with regards to what Mr. Walker just raised. So that means that if there is a sewer line that is, I know, for example, where I live, there's a sewer line that's on somebody's property. And it's very confusing and difficult because you have to pay the person to join their, the line, which, anyway, I'm wondering if there's an, there, if this is an equitable situation, what you're describing, that a line can come in and the town can get involved and, you know, share in the cost of it. And in other situations, you know, share in the cost of it. And in other situations, which, you know, uh, a resident has no control over, they're forced to, to, um, you know, not have that, that option.
Okay, thank you. Um, select board, or if you're okay with that, Chase Berkeley?
Yep. So without any real specifics of the actual property, uh, it sounds like, you know, there, there's a condition that exists where there's a pipe already in the ground that, that's available to connect to. Typically for a developer, it's much cheaper for them to, um, do the construction work to connect to a, a public sewer that's already existing. When the town gets involved, it has to go through a public bid process, prevailing wages and et cetera, uh, which greatly in- increase the cost and, and also the timeframe it takes. You know, we've been working on this betterment since 2019 and we're still not there yet, you know, so it's a lot longer process. But there is benefit to doing it in larger scale applications.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I see, uh, Mr. Mulligan. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, to the previous speaker's question, so, and this is probably goes to Mr. Berkeley. What happens if there is a piece of property over along Randolph Ave, these nine people are paying two thirds of the cost? And now somebody subdivides, or there's a piece of property that can be built onto. Is the new, if, if there was a new house added to that sewer line extension, are the costs going to be sort of lowered for the people that are paying the 800,000? Or does the contractor get the cheaper installation?
Um, Mr. Mulligan, could you remind folks, uh, your name and precinct?
I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, James Mulligan, precinct two.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, uh, Mr. Berkeley, did you get that question?
Yes. And again, without any, uh, specifics about the property and the, in the layout, um, so the cost of a new development in a new property that didn't exist at the time of this project would be, would be borne solely on that property owner to connect to this line after the fact. I think that answers it.
But do they, I'm sorry. So do they, do they pay? Are they gonna, the nine houses are paying $800,000 approximately for however long this, for this piece of sewer to be added. And so they can, they have sort of a fixed cost they're going in for. If a contractor comes in later on and adds to it, is it lowering the amount that they're gonna owe or is, are they just gonna pay for the direct connection?
Is that clear, Mr. Berkeley?
Yeah. So properties do not get added into this betterment after it's executed.
Okay.
Is that clear, Mr. Mulligan?
Yeah, I, I think I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, seeing no other hands, uh, we'll proceed to a vote. By the way, this does require a two thirds vote because of the bonding issue. So, um, team, are we ready to put up the poll? And let me just, uh, we're double checking. Okay, we'll put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. And are the phones unmuted? On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? Thank you. We can mute the phones. And we have the voting in. Uh, the motion carries 96, uh, I'll start to recording votes. So 205, yes at 96%, uh, nine, no at 4%. I declare a two thirds vote. Uh, with that, we'll proceed back to article two. For article two, uh, a couple of things tonight. Um, we do have, uh, I think eight citizens who have, uh, requested permission to speak and been validated by the town clerk as active registered voters. Uh, when we get to the discussion, I'll give them some instructions, but I'm going to start by recognizing Mr. George Asher, the, uh, chair of the warrant committee, who will explain the reason for the warrant committee's recommendation. And by the way, I'll just read that recommendation. An article two is recommended that this article be referred to the planning board for further study. So, Mr. Asher, if we can get you online.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Asher, Chair of the Warrant Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. Uh, the warrant committee has met at least half a dozen times and devoted significant work to this accessory dwelling unit article. And, uh, I first want to recognize the, uh, very, very diligent work and the tremendous effort that has been devoted to this article by the planning board and certainly the select board and actually my committee as well. We made this recommendation to refer this article back to the planning board unanimously. Uh, and it was made after a great deal of deliberation and the reasons that we devoted, uh, to this rec- this, uh, particular recommendation, uh, are, 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 are various. We have virtually every, uh, point on the political, economic, demographic spectrum represented on the warrant committee and the reasons that many people had for referring this back to the planning board were different, but the sum total of our discussion was that we did not feel that it was, uh, done. It was not ready. It was not, um, didn't take into consideration the changes, uh, that had been suggested by many people on the, uh, in the town and that there was more work to be done. Uh, we voted in January, uh, prior to the planning board's, uh, meeting, um, and public hearing based on the draft that we saw, which was actually, uh, not changed very much by that deliberation that the planning board had in January. Our reasons for referring this back to the planning board are, are several, but I'll distill them down to a couple of considerations. In, in the first place, it seems that our, our bylaws generally in town, not limited to zoning, represent something of a patchwork. And this is particularly patchwork-y. Um, there are a, a couple of bylaws. There's an in-law apartment by law. There, and then there's exists accessory dwelling unit by law, which treat residences and dwellings differently. There's different language. There's different square footage. Um, and, and it seems to me that the most intelligent thing for the planning board to do and the town meeting to consider is to take all of the articles that we have governing, uh, ancillary units and dwelling units that would make more than one family in a single, what is built as a single family unit harmonized. It's, it, it just strikes me that there is so much, uh, disparity between these, uh, and instruct the, the, the warrant committee, there's so much disparity among these articles that it would make greater sense to put just all the provisions side by side, compare them and make them more uniform so that there would be less wiggle room, less room for, uh, for, uh, interpretation, less room for abuse, et cetera. Uh, our other considerations, uh, went, uh, ranged from concerns about the different treatments of the, uh, accessory dwelling units in the, in the actual single family residence versus the freestanding garage or barn. Uh, one being by right, the other requiring a, a permit. Um, and that the, uh, permit, the only permit required for the single family in, in, uh, square footage change would be a building permit. So there was really no limitation on what could be done after that. Uh, the restriction of 10 ADU permits to be issued annually on a first come, first served basis irrespective of need was a concern of some of our members. There was also this, uh, definitional discrepancy between principal dwelling unit and floor space in a single family dwelling. And that may not seem to be necessarily, uh, of import, but if you worked out the limit, the, the restrictions and the, the, the carve-outs in these different definitions, you actually came up with different square footage. One would be much larger than the other if you actually worked it out. Um, the warrant committee actually looked at a, uh, as considering a citizen's petition that would moni- that would modify the existing in-law apartment by law. Uh, it, that'll come up at the, uh, annual meeting in the spring. And we wondered if it wasn't wise to look at this and the accessory dwelling unit to try to make them more in conformity one with another. Finally, there was, uh, a, a, a concern that, um, we were kicking the can down the road, that we're just postponing the inevitable, that other towns have this, et cetera. I really take issue with kicking the can down the road and dithering because I don't think we do that. I think the warrant committee looks at things very deliberately. It looks at things, uh, in a, a very apolitical as much as possible. Uh, and, uh, uh, systematic fashion that will try to take the emotion out of this. And this obviously is a very emotional issue. Uh, I have had probably five to one, uh, anti, uh, calls and emails and petitions, uh, for this. However, uh, the town of Milton, uh, was started in 1640. It's been here for almost 400 years. I think it's worth our time to be deliberate about this, to look at the needs of our town and to possibly engage a study by the planning board to look at the needs, to look at the, in the, the, the proper ma- ways of implementing an accessory dwelling unit provision in our bylaws that will take into account concerns of the citizen, density, parking and other issues that have been raised by opponents of this, but also the needs of an aging population that may want to have, uh, help in the house, another relative in the house, divide the house up in a way, uh, that may be more economical for them. I think that is in incumbent on all of us to look at this in as dispassionate a fashion as possible. And to make sure that as we make these changes, we recognize that the town, the town changes. It's a living, growing town. If you want to see dead towns, you can go to the southwest and you see ghost towns galore. But Milton isn't one of these places. It's a desirable place to live. People move here for a reason. We recognize that. We recognize that the needs change and we have to accommodate that. But I, I think it is well within our, um, our purview as a warrant committee to refer this back to the planning board and to, uh, to take the emotion, to diffuse it and to look at it in a dispassionate way and in a way that is as empirical as possible so that we can satisfy the needs of the community in as efficient and as logical a manner as possible. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Asher. So, uh, just before we get into the discussion, uh, two things. I want to make sure the audience recognizes where we are right now. So we are, uh, working on a process motion to refer this back to the planning board. Uh, we're not getting, I'd like to avoid getting into the substance of whether ADUs are good or not and the substance of the article itself. And instead focus on, um, Mr. Mr. Asher's point of refer it back to the planning board or not. The other question I have is I have eight citizens, uh, tonight that wish to speak. Um, I'm unsure if they want to speak to the motion to refer, which is our process motion. They probably don't. Um, or do you, if, if we go to a vote on adoption, if the motion to refer fails, do they want to speak to that? So could, uh, the following folks, if you want to speak to this motion to refer, click the raise hand button. It would be, uh, Ms. Stalker, Ms. Steele, Ms. Joyce, Mr. Glavine, um, Ms. Glavine, Ms. Champion, Mr. Coleza and Mr. Smith. If you could raise your hands and we'll see if you want to speak to the motion to refer. I see one who does. I see two who wish to speak to that. Very good. Okay. If you'll keep your hands raised, what I'll do is I'll go back and forth between the town meeting members and the citizens on this motion to refer. Um, Ms. Swenson, I think you had your hand up a moment ago as the chair of the planning board. Did you wish to speak before we get into the debate?
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Moderator, Denny Swenson, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five, Chair of the Planning Board. Um, did you want to know, um, the planning board's response to the recommendation?
You're welcome to announce it, please.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Well, typically we, I do that quite at the end, but if you're welcome to do it now, sure.
Oh, no, that's fine. I want to do it in whatever order you prefer.
You can tell us right now. You're, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Um, just the, the majority of the planning board, um, moved to reject the warrant committee's recommendation and to adopt the article as printed in the warrant.
Very good. Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Thank you. Uh, with that, I see, uh, Mr. Walker, Mr. Chinman, Mr. Whiteside and his McIntosh, Mr. Fadis. Mr. Walker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. Uh, you, you were of the same mind that I was. I, I would like to hear from, uh, the planning board. Uh, and from the select board as to whether they support the warrant committee's recommendation, but also, uh, why or why not?
Okay. Good question. Yep. Um, Ms. Conlon, are you back with us to give the select board point of view?
I'm sorry. Are you asking to Ms. Conlon or Swenson?
Well, I, I'll ask Mr. Walker. Mr. Walker, did you get the answer you were looking for from the planning board? So I can go to select.
Uh, no, no. I, I, I heard, uh, obviously that they don't support it, but I'd also like to know why.
Under, by mistake. Okay, Ms. Swenson, if you could describe.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to defer to Kathleen O'Donnell, um, the author of the article.
Ms. O'Donnell, if you can, uh, unmute. Do you need your video on, Ms. O'Donnell? Otherwise we can just hear your, uh, your points.
She needs to be promoted to panelist, Ms. O'Donnell.
Can we do that, team? Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Um, I would like to address the question of the planning board's support of this article. We voted, uh, as usual, would expect three to two to reject the recommendation of the warrant committee. We would point out the fact that the, um, comment underneath the planning board, the warrant committee's recommendation is in fact, um, uh, sort of incorrect. We did vote as an article and we were advised by some folks that, and potentially, and town council, that there was some question about the process. So after the warrant committee took its vote, we did in fact have a subsequent hearing, which was properly noticed and held and voted to put the article forward three to two, um, as it is printed in the warrant. It is our contention that this is such a, uh, an important issue that it should be discussed by town meeting and not referred back for another study. We did, we got that same recommendation last year and did a study. In 2014, there was a, a recommendation to send it back to study. In 2017, there was a recommendation to send it back to study. So we really feel that at this point in the ti- in time, it's more appropriate to have town meeting discuss it.
Thank you, ma'am. And, Mr. Walker, if you're okay, I'll go to the chair of the select board for the same.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Ms. Conlon, you there?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Uh, the select board is unanimously opposed to the motion to refer this article for further study. We'd like to note a few things, namely the current and former housing production plans have recommended that we take action on amending the existing temporary accessory, uh, temporary apartment by law, which everyone, I think everyone, uh, even at the planning board meetings, members of the public have expressed a view that that is outdated and, and inadequate. So this is something that's been recommended through the, at least the course of the last, the two current, the one, one current and one former housing production plans going back over the past almost 10 years. There was considerable discussion on this article at the town meeting, leading up to the town meeting last spring. The article that that's a, a different article, but a, an article on this topic was sent back for further study last May. We already have quite a bit that's going to be on the May 2022 annual town meeting warrant, and there's never a shortage of topics for town meeting. We already have some items that we're planning ahead for, for next October. There are much bigger fish to fry. The MBTA's community zoning is coming out as like a freight train coming down the tracks. And that's going to require a substantial amount of time by the planning staff. Now, we're already in the stage where we're filing comments on the proposed regulations, but there's a lot more to come on that topic and on others. We'd also like to point out that all of the reasons that are printed in the comment in the warrant have been resolved at this stage. And the other substantive arguments that were made by the warrant committee this evening go to the merits of the article and whether we should pass the article or not. So the select board's view is that this should not be referred for further study. It should be debated and decided this evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Walker?
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Uh, with that, uh, I'm going to go to our first citizen. So we alternate. I see, uh, Ms. Judith Steele. Ma'am, if you could, uh, tell us your, uh, your name and your address and, uh, we do ask for a 10-minute limit. And we do ask for a 10-minute limit, but the members appreciate brevity, so you're recognized.
Judith Steele, Precinct 2. There is a concern that has been raised concerning Section 8, Number 2, which goes to the limit of permits in a 12-month period, commonly known as the cap. At the February 8th Planning Board meeting, comments during that meeting by the planning board amongst themselves indicated that there might be a conflict with the of right that this housing is and the cap. They seem to have a conflict. The issue that I bring is town council did not see a conflict. They sent it through. However, if this article does go to vote this evening, it would go on to the Attorney General's office, at which time the Attorney General's office-
Can I interrupt for a minute? We just had a member raise a point of order. Let me just pull that up. I know where the member may be going. I'm giving the latitude to the speaker. So the point of order is, the speaker should be addressing only the referral back. I'm waiting to see where she's going. This is raised by Margaret Davis. And so if you provide the speaker a little latitude, let's see where Ms. Steele is going. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going right back to. If this was, doesn't need further study, yet during this planning board meeting, a conflict was raised. It leads me to believe maybe some more time should be spent on that issue before it goes to a vote at town meeting. To correct that, without article, Section 8, Number 2 included in this article, when all is said and done, after going to the Attorney General, this article is very much different than the article we see before us at the moment. And I'm sorry, I didn't know which way to go on.
I just was, I knew you were going to get somewhere. I was just waiting to see where you ended up, so I-
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, very good. Next, let me go back to my attendees. I see, I'll just read the list. Mr. Chinman, Whiteside, Fahey, Kelly, Fruze, and Matthews. Mr. Chinman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Chinman, Precinct 2. I'm getting a couple unmute messages. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I want to express great dissatisfaction with the supposed recommendation of the warrant committee, especially the speech that was given just before we started considering it. And I'm also confused. The, the warrant says, recommended that the article be referred to the planning board for further study. The comment, however, says that the warrant committee voted unanimously to remand the article back to the planning board and to not take a vote on the ultimate issue at hand. So it's not clear to me that if they, if they did not take a vote on what the recommendation would be, I'm not sure how the recommendation is that the article be referred to the planning board. And I think the language in the comment from the warrant committee that they remanded the matter back to the planning board is very telling because remand is something that a higher court does to a lower court. It sends a matter back to a lower court for appropriate action based on the higher court's opinion or decision. And the warrant committee is way out of bounds here in considering itself having the power to remand matters back to the planning board. The warrant committee is advisory 100%. They are unelected advisors. They report to town meeting and they are subservient to town meeting. They do not ride herd on elected officials, elected boards, like the planning board or the select board. They don't have that power. That, that power exists and that power belongs to town meeting and we are elected. And the power that town meeting has and the power that the planning board has comes from the consent of the governed at the ballot box. And for the warrant committee to declare itself capable of remanding matters back to the planning board is usurping the power of the, the voters as expressed at the ballot box. It's just a usurpation of power and it's a dereliction of duty because the bylaws specifically stay and they're not unclear. The warrant committee shall consider the various articles in the warrants. It's not discretionary, it's shall. And the warrant committee shall report in print before all such meetings their estimates and recommendations for the action of the town. And the recommendation we got in this warrant, this comment from the warrant committee is absurd because the warrant committee does not, in addition to not having the power to remand, they do not enforce the open meeting law. They are not responsible for determining whether the planning board followed proper procedures. They're supposed to take things that are properly before town meeting and make a recommendation. And the, the reason this is so important, Mr. Moderator, is because the opponents of this article don't have to vote it down to prevail. It's, they prevail if it gets voted again back to the planning board, which has already happened at town meeting before. This was not passed in haste. These were elected members. The citizens of the voters of the town gave them the power. They took action, recommended an article to us town meeting members. And I really am disgusted by the warrant committee's action here and thinking they have the power to remand and thinking they can defy the bylaws and not make a recommendation and then have the chair of the warrant committee stand up and give a laundry list of reasons why they didn't make a recommendation. And he's not on the planning board. Not a single member of the warrant committee is on the planning board. And I, I think this should be the disgust of all town meeting members because the warrant committee answers to us. They are subservient to us. They don't have power. Their comment, their comment on Article 4 says that they voted to approve the article. They don't approve that. They make recommendations. They don't approve articles. They're, they're way out of bounds in what their power is. And I urge the town meeting members to look past the dereliction of duty here by the warrant committee and look past it. Trust the elected officials on the planning board. Trust the elected officials on the select board. And let's vote down this recommendation to refer it back. Have a discussion and I hope to be able to recommend at the end of that discussion that we approve this article.
Thank you, Mr. Chinman. So I think Mr. Chinman's points were clearly passionate. I think, sir, you were walking pretty close to the line of the type of respect for the attendees in the meeting that I'd asked about. I let it go because I can hear the passion in your voice. I'd ask if our future members could avoid emotional adjectives and adverbs such as disgust with our members of our warrant committee. Mr. Chinman, did you have a specific question? I thought you, you started one with the difference between refer and the comment or-
Well, no, I objected to remand, Mr. Moderator.
Okay.
And I, but I would like an explanation for if the warrant committee never voted on the ultimate issue at hand, which is what the comment says. The warrant committee did not take a vote on the ultimate issue at hand, then how is the recommended by the warrant committee, the article be referred to the planning board for further study?
Understood. Okay, thank you. I'll recognize Chair Asher. Mr. Asher, if you could calmly perhaps describe the process the warrant committee went through.
The warrant committee did consider all of the conversations that the planning board had. We had multiple presentations. Our recommendation, and it was just a recommendation, which is the enforceable part of the warrant, was to return this to the planning board for further work. We understand we're not elected. We look at our responsibility very seriously. We take it very seriously. The wording in the comment, if it was inaccurate, well, I apologize for that. But we did take a vote and the vote was unanimous for very different reasons. The, in the, we wanted to be very clear that there were support, there was support for the article in, among members of the committee, the warrant committee. There was also opposition, but there was a uniform concept that it required further, further work to make it harmonious and to be in, in sync with other bylaws because there were several other bylaws that discussed similar divisions of households and treated them differently. And we felt at this point that it would be advisable to have more work done on this, to make it easier for the town meeting, to make its consideration. We understand very clearly. We do not make the discussion and the decisions. We recommend, and that is all that this is, is a recommendation. We are not the, we are an advisory body. We understand that very clearly. The member who spoke earlier, I appreciate his passion, but I will underscore that we understand very clearly what our responsibility is. We are not usurping anybody's authority. We understand that the town meeting has the authority to do this. And very often we say, okay, we'll pass this up and let the town meeting talk about it. It will be a complex discussion. We try to make it as simple for the rest of us to understand as possible. I will take exception. We are not usurping any, anybody's authority. We respect the select board. We respect the planning board. The planning board was a split vote too. This is going to take a lot of discussion and we understand that. I will defend the members of the warrant committee as being devoted and diligent in their work. We spend hours, if not weeks, working on the warrant. If it is unclear what the recommendation is, which is what the town meeting acts on, that's unfortunate. I think it's very clear. And I will go back to my point that I think the discussion that the town meeting has is its business. Our recommendation stands to return it to the warrant, to the planning board. And I think that's exactly what the recommendation said. And I'm looking at it, recommended that the article be referred to the planning board for further study, that there was discussion in 2014, 2017, 2019. That's great. At that point, there were others that didn't think it was ready for primetime. We don't either. If you choose to vote it your way, that's the purview of the town meeting, but our recommendation stands and I stand by it and I stand by our methodology.
Thank you, Mr. Asher. Mr. Chinman, any follow-up questions? No, your hand is down. Okay. With that, I'll go to our second guest. This is Mr. Dennis, I think it's Coleza. Sir, if you could just announce yourself and your address. And again, brevity is appreciated, but you do have a 10-minute time limit.
Yes, Dennis Coleza, Precinct 6. I just wanted to make a brief comment that I do support the warrant committee's recommendation to remand this back to the planning board for all the reasons that Mr. Asher mentioned. And in particular, because of its inconsistencies as it relates to the detached family dwelling bylaws and as written, I believe it's riddled with opportunities for abuse and it should be looked at and it should be clarified. That's all I would have to say.
Thank you, sir. With that, I have no more citizens that have raised their hand. So again, if any citizens were missing before, if you want to speak to the motion to refer, not the substance of the article as written, please raise your hand and I'll recognize you alternating in order. With that, we'll go back to Mr. Whiteside. Sir, you're recognized.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, sir.
Good. I guess there's no video. My name is Alexander Whiteside. I'm a former member of the planning board. I was on the board for 30 years, 32 years. And during that time, I wrote most of the zoning for the town. Almost all of the zoning for the town. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 9. The plan, the warrant committee has recommended that this article be sent back to the planning board for further work. And I support that recommendation. And one of the reasons why I support it is that I think that the article is very deficient in its wording and in some of its concepts. And one could say that, well, that has to do with the substance of the article and whether or not you support it. And that's true, but I don't support it because I think it's defective. And because of the deficiencies, that's why I want to send it back to the warrant committee. And so you let me know if you think that I'm talking to the merits of the discussion. I think that I'm-
I believe you are, sir, so continue. Yes.
I think I'm talking to the merits of the, whether or not it should be sent back.
No, you are. Yes, you're on, you're within scope and you're on point.
All right. So I'm going to do, I'm going to, I might mention that I, I do think that it would be, it's a mistake not to give preference to elderly homeowners. And I also think there should be a good reason other than financial profit for allowing a homeowner to create a second dwelling unit in the homeowner's house or on his or her lot. This article would authorize an additional dwelling unit on single-family lots in existing dwellings, additions to dwellings, or in other newer existing structures on single-family lots. The proposal treats ADUs, which do not require major alteration to the exterior of a dwelling, very differently than the exact same units which are contained in expanded houses or in detached buildings. The so-called by right ADUs, which can be constructed in a home without major alterations, are subject to few requirements other than owner occupancy.
Mr. Whiteside, could I pause for a minute? We've just had a point of order. Pardon me, let me look at the chat. So a member is saying this to the merits of the article. The way I'm interpreting Mr. Whiteside's points is he are, he is articulating examples of the issues he has with the language. Is that right, Mr. Whiteside?
With, with what's provided. I mean, the deficiencies in what's provided. The failure to make by right ADUs properly enforceable or subject to termination has to do with the, the merits of the article, but it's also a reason why the article should be sent back to the planning board. I think there's a big overlap here and I, you know, I understand the, I understand that it's somewhat ambiguous, but I think that I'm on the right. I, I think that what I'm talking about is why this article should be sent back to the, to the planning board. And its deficiencies. Its deficiencies. The deficiencies have to be corrected. What do you think?
I think you're still on point in my view.
Okay. Thank you.
As long as you're issuing, listing deficiencies-
By right ADUs, which can be constructed in a home without major alterations, are subject to few requirements. All that's required is a building permit. The ADUs can be constructed without notice to neighbors. Neighbors and interested residents of the town have no part of the process. Any concerns which they might have are irrelevant. Most specifically, there is no requirement that adequate parking be provided. Although subject to some existing restrictions about parking in the setback area, parking is in fact at the discretion of the homeowner. In the residency district, whatever might be the need for parking, two spaces total for the two units. One for the principal dwelling unit and one for the ADU are all the parking a homeowner who constructs a by right ADU need provide. In contrast, ADUs which involve a major alteration to the exterior or which are in a detached building can only be constructed at the issuance of a special permit by the Board of Appeals. A comprehensive application for the special permit is required. Design, floor area, and septic- Design, floor area, and septic information is required. There's a requirement for a site plan showing the location of parking and driveways, as well as for a demonstration that the parking to be provided will be adequate. After the Board of Appeals receives an application for a special permit, ADU, a hearing is scheduled and notice of the hearing on the application is given to the public. At the hearing, the applicant makes a presentation about the proposal, answers questions. Neighbors and other interested persons are given the opportunity to ask questions, to raise pertinent issues, and to offer comments. If the amount, design, and/or adequacy of the parking are issues, information and testimony will be presented. After the hearing, the Board of Appeals will issue a decision whether or not to issue a special permit authorizing the ADU.
Mr. Whiteside, just a request. If you could, rather than reading the content, could you describe the problem with the content more succinctly?
Well, the problem with the content is that the design and adequacy of parking for a by right ADU is, is not, is not a factor. It should be a factor. If it were a special pertinent ADU, it would be one of the principal issues in a, in determining whether or not the ADU should be granted. But a by right ADU in the C District has no requirement for parking other than two total spaces. And this is inadequate by anyone's, anyone must concede that. And it makes no sense. Why isn't there a parking requirement? Why isn't the location of the parking specified? Both of those things are required for a special permit ADU. Just because an ADU is in a, an existing dwelling doesn't mean that it doesn't need parking. It needs the same parking as the other ADUs and parking should be treated the same. And people should be allowed to raise issues about parking. They shouldn't be, you know, the by right ADUs, the public has no rights. It's basically a secret procedure between the applicant and the building commissioner. A building permit is the only permit that you need other than eventually an occupancy permit. And the public and neighbors basically are entirely left out of the process for a by right ADU. And there's no reason for this. The only reason that there was a by right ADU proposed was that the legislature provided that if you have a provision for by right ADUs in certain circumstances, it could be passed by a 51 or a majority vote rather than a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Whiteside, you're, you're hitting your 10-minute limit here. So could you just wrap?
Well, I, I'm sorry. I was going to point out part one of the article.
Okay, tell you what.
Could you show that? Could you show part one of the article?
Yes, but I think you've hit your 10 minutes. I've provided a lot of latitude on the content. A lot of the members are raising points of order on the content.
All right. Well, there are, I've got four specific issues, which I'll come back to.
Tell you what, why don't I, I'll let you get that as a, in the second pass through tonight. So thank you, Mr. Whiteside. Okay, let me just check and see if we have any citizen speakers. I don't see any citizens, but I do see Ms. O'Donnell of the planning board. Ms. O'Donnell, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to point out that the discussion is meant to be focused on the recommendation of the warrant committee and not the discussion of the article at hand. Mr. Whiteside's comments point to my point of order that we should be, the town meeting should be discussing this article, that it should not be sent back to town, to the planning board for further discussion and for further study. The points that citizens are making should all be discussed in an open session of town meeting. The only thing that we're supposed to be talking about now, as I understood it, was whether or not we would support the recommendation of the warrant committee. And I would hope that that would be what we would be focusing on. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. So folks, what I'm listening for in real time, when I hear these comments from our citizens and town meeting members, is just trying to interpret, are they staying within the lines? Where I heard Mr. Whiteside going was examples of the language permits, a situation in one case and not another. So I was given that. I was interpreting that he was staying within the limits of the language, which is the point about referring back. That's the rationale I'm trying to provide, if that provides some explanation to the members. Next, I see Mr. Fahey, you're recognized. Can we, there we go. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Thanks very much. First, before I spend a few minutes on, on the few words that I want to say, I do want to say I look forward to being back in person with all of our members of town meeting. So hopefully we'll all be back together soon.
Could you give us your name and precinct, sir?
I will, I will. Sean Fahey, Precinct 9. I apologize. I, I do agree with the warrant committee recommendation to return the article back to the planning board for further study. And I, I really, my, the emphasis of my recommendation or my, the emphasis of my assessment and my support of the recommendation is based on something that our planning board did last week. So our planning board wrote an informational document, which was sent to all the town meeting members. And in my opinion, that was sent to the town meeting members to prepare them for this article. So the purpose was, as I see it, to provide information for our members that need to be informed prior to considering the article tonight. I think writing and sending to the town meeting members was indicative of how limited the resident knowledge of the article is throughout the town. If we're informing our town meeting members of this particular article, it's likely that most of the residents have very, very limited awareness of it. So the issue of concern for me is this. What was published, what were written and issued by the planning department only presents the view of the planning board members that voted in favor of the article. It does not include any of the concerns or the views of those opposed. So I would like to remind the town meeting members that the vote was not unanimous. This was a three-two vote. So as a town meeting member, you should be given all the information to consider if we're asking you to vote. As written, the document that we all received is influencing the reader by only providing the proponent's view. My opinion, I believe our town government should be transparent and provide our town meeting members with all the information, including our two elected planning board members' points of opposition. So I'm asking, Mr. Moderator, for you to allow Denny Swenson to address the body, to provide the information in the opposing point of view, as it was not provided in the document that was issued by the planning board.
Edit, Mr. Fahey?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. By the way, folks, I have a moderator of the chat room and I'm not watching the chat myself because I've already got six other information sources up here. If you have a, wish to make a, have a question, if you could just click on this such that your name appears. Someone clicked on one, we had an anonymous user, and we're just going to ignore that unless we know who is posting these questions. That'd be helpful. Thank you. Mr. Fahey, you didn't have a question, I don't think. You were just making a statement, right?
No, I really don't have a question, Mr. Moderator. I, I have other things, but I want to stay to the point that we're, we're addressing. So yeah, my, my biggest concern here is that our planning board, I, I don't think served the town meeting members well and fully and properly by providing only the points of view of the three members that voted in favor of it. I just, you know, in, in good conscience, I feel as town government, we need to provide all the information available, especially when we're asking something as important as this particular article to be considered by town meeting. So since it wasn't provided in the letter, I think the only opportunity we have is to ask Denny Swenson, who did happen to vote in opposition to it, to speak to the town meeting member body tonight and provide the information that was not provided by the planning board.
Ms. Swenson, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Moderator Hess. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please.
Oh, yes, thanks. Denny Swenson, town meeting member, Precinct 5, Chair of the Planning Board. Thank you, Mr. Fahey. Thank you for asking for my opinion. Happy to tell you my thoughts. Our town is under immense development pressure. And in the five years that I've served on the planning board, we've gotten denser and our housing stock has been diversifying in many ways. For example, Walcott Woods, 30, 55 townhouse units, Woodmere, 35 townhouse units, Milton Woods, 23 new houses, 227 Pleasant Street, five new houses, Wentworth Farms, 10 new houses, Hendry's, 38 new condominiums. At 475 Adam Street, we've got denser mixed use with first floor business units and more housing units above. And, and they were, and we got more business units at Bent Cookies with more micro housing units upstairs. My point is that Milton is getting denser with each new application before us and our town has been diversifying our housing stock within our current zoning. Milton also has 10 40B developments pending. If most of those are approved in some form, which unfortunately is likely, that will mean approximately 500 additional units of differing housing stock in the next five or so years. While housing units bring in real estate taxes, it's important to look at the other side of the ledger, at the financial cost to our overburdened schools, fire, and police departments, our roadways and DPW, our inspectional and town services. We need to understand the costs for traffic mitigation, parking mitigation, and the fact that we're losing green space and trees at a record rate. This side of the ledger needs to be taken into account as we contemplate measures that will add further density to our town. Specifically, in respect to the accessory dwelling unit article, this article did pass by a three-to-two vote. Meredith Hall and I thought this article should go back to the planning board for further study. We agreed with the warrant committee. We believe that this article could have tighter language that would not expose the town to development that is contrary to the stated goals of the article itself. In my five years on the planning board, I've received more feedback on this article than I have on any other issue before our board. Meredith and I believe the article could be more responsive and inclusive of the incredible amount of public comment given. Here are some of the sticking points. There's been great debate over the preference for special permit over as-of-right. Special permit allows neighbors to voice a concern about a potential impact and allows the Board of Appeals the opportunity to adjust a proposal to create a win-win solution instead of one side getting their way and that's the end of the story. We believe that the special permit process works for special things like accessory dwelling units, where you are changing the use from single family to a single family plus a rental unit. I want to make sure that everyone understands that proponents have stated on the record multiple times during our meetings, they plan to remove the cap of 10 at this town meeting or a future town meeting. So we are on a path here. It would only take a simple majority vote, not a two-thirds, to go from 10 units to limitless. Part of the argument has been that other towns don't have a great number of applications for accessory dwelling units, so therefore a limit of 10 is not needed. What they overlook is that other towns have different kinds of limits that keep the numbers down. For instance, they refer to Lexington.
By the way, Ms. Swenson, you're still focused on the issues of the, why you recommended not to, well, again, we're on the motion to refer.
That's right.
If you could try to stay away from all the substance of the article and why you thought this was perhaps not ready.
Okay. Meredith and I offered, I'm sorry, there's an echo here. Why is there an echo?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm sorry. Meredith and I, Meredith and I offered to give up, are you hearing an echo?
Yes, I think someone in your room, Ms. Swenson, is there.
Okay. Meredith and I offered to give up the cap of 10 if accessory dwelling units could be limited to family instead of market rate in this article, but the proponents were not interested in meaning us halfway on any of the key issues of debates.
You can listen with them having your
Okay, hey, Ms. Swenson, the planning board room, if everyone could mute their mics in the room. I still hear microphones on there.
Okay. I, I think Sean Fahey might need to mute too. I'm not sure if it's him.
Mr. Fahey, you could mute as well until Mrs. Swenson's done.
Okay. So I think compromise and consensus building is important when it comes to townwide zoning. We clearly don't have consensus on this. Other towns limit ADU creation by requiring a minimum lot size or a minimum house size, or they can occur in houses built before a certain date. That is why these other towns have a small number of ADUs. This article has none of those limits. Some towns even have a limit on the number of people that can live in them. I'm not proposing these limits, but we as a board have never even discussed any of these limits as a way to steer impact. So if the cap of 10 is removed from this article, we, it does open it up to 7,000 single-family houses would have the option of becoming two-family, basically. So there hasn't been any impact analysis specific to Milton. We feel there should be a thorough understanding of the impact to our overcrowded schools and roadways, to our overburdened infrastructure, prior to advancing an article like this forward. If this were sent back for further study, we could shape this into an article that incorporates what we're hearing from the public. Accessory dwelling units should be welcomed in our town for families in need. The widow or the family taking in a handicapped relative should not have to compete with real estate investors or others who are simply seeking financial profit. If we want to increase our diversity numbers, then we as a town can roll up our sleeves and think of ways to do a preference or an incentive in that direction. The way that this article is currently written, it assumes that market rate rentals will accomplish racial diversity, but market rate doesn't necessarily create more diversity. However, we believe there is, there is thoughtful language we could work on in that direction. That would be a really important thing to do. These units will not legally qualify as affordable units. These are market rate rentals and there is no cap on how much anyone can charge for rent. The language in the article can do a better job of steering toward the goal of affordable housing. For every 10 accessory dwelling units the town creates, we will need to create one qualifying affordable unit in our town to keep up with the state's mandates. Our town has a great difficulty creating qualifying affordable units. We really need a plan for creating qualifying units to get out from under aggressive developers who threaten 40B. Any new zoning language should require adequate parking. For this article, in Zone C, the parking requirement of one spot for the house and one spot for the accessory dwelling unit is not sufficient if you have two families living there. We have received a lot of comments and concerns about overflow parking on the street, overnight, preventing emergency vehicles, and snowplow access. And people have complained that we already have overflow parking on people's lawns. We believe that language can and should be improved to require adequate parking. The article lacks enforcement language for the as-of-right units. Once an as-of-right unit is granted, there is no permit to pull back on, and it lacks a process for how to deal with non-compliance. The enforcement language in this article relates to the special permit units, is virtually absent for the as-of-right units. As an elected
Could you start to wrap up, please?
This is my wrap-up. As an elected, I feel listening to the constituents is important. As a planning board member, I feel vetting with the public in a meaningful way, dotting the i's, crossing the t's in the language to our townwide zoning prior to submission for town meeting is important. That has not happened here. Meredith Hall and I respectfully request that you send a accessory dwelling unit back for further study to the planning board, as the warrant committee has already voted unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, I'm listening for content and listening for problems that the speakers have with the language as written. Now, I think there may be differences of opinion, but I'm, I'm, so far in my judgment, we've had some lengthy comments from speakers, but I, I believe their spirit is to stick within problems with the language rather than the merits of adopting of the idea of the article. Now, I'm going to go back to the citizens for a minute, just to make sure that there's no citizens that want to speak to the motion to refer. We still have Ms. Stocker, Joyce, Mr. Glavine, Ms. Glavine, Ms. Champion, Mr. Smith. No hands are raised about the motion to refer. It sounds like you want to wait until
I've seen it.
If you can mute, Denny.
Sorry, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I'll continue on to the next town meeting member, Mr. Fers, you're recognized. You're recognized.
Thank you, Brian Fers, town meeting member, precinct ten, also a prior member of the planning board. I'm actually kind of shocked about what just happened and a little bit dismayed by it, but that being said, I actually am pretty happy that we heard the minority opinion tonight, because I think it actually spoke to exactly why this should be taken to town meeting tonight for an up or down vote and not be referred back to the planning board for further study. The prior speaker spoke to building consensus and needing to discuss it, and that's exactly what we're trying to do by bringing this forward to a body that has been elected by the people of Milton to answer the hard questions for our town. So let us talk about it. For years, this article has been sent back for study over and over again. It's time to let this body speak and make a decision one way or the other. Most of the projects named by the prior speaker were actually voted on by town meeting because of the requirement to change the zoning in order to accommodate them. So the very projects that were being touted as a reason that this should go back for further study were actually voted on by this body. The fortyBs that were referenced are actually a result of our antiquated zoning that has driven developers to bypass the zoning in order to build density on properties. This article is one way that people could find ways to make their homes more appropriate for their own circumstances. Again, this body should get a chance to talk about that. Another prior speaker who wrote much of the zoning in our town spoke about the deficiencies of the article. Those are his opinions, and they're not necessarily deficiencies for all of the people that make up town meeting. So this body should determine whether this article is deficient or not, not single individuals. Finally, demands for a study is a pretty common call by this, by many speakers in town meeting. It's what Milton does. We send things back for study over and over again in order to delay the decision. We're studying a bylaw that caps the potential units at ten. To me, that is the study. We have a cap of ten units. The impact of those ten units is likely close to nothing. That is a study. Let the represented officials that make up this body discuss the merits, something this body has been hoping to do for many, many years in many cases, as many ADU articles have come and been sent back time and time again. It's time for this body to have an opportunity to discuss it and vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fers. I applaud the courtesy and the structure of your, your comments there. So thank you for the care you took with that. Next, we'll go to Mr. Matthews. Sir, you're recognized.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Scott Matthews, town meeting member, precinct ten. Though, the process of some of these articles where it's, we're voting on the recommendation, send it back, confuses me. So can you explain what happens if we vote yes and what happens if we vote no? I know that you were putting a stipulation for us to only talk about sending it back, but if there is the, what, what happens if we vote to not send it back, right?
Yep. Good question. So if you, if it gets sent back, then we will wrap up town meeting tonight, and we'll have no further discussion on Article Two. If it fails, I've been informed by the planning board that they will offer a motion to adopt Article Two as printed in the warrant. And then, when I get a second, we will then get into the discussion of the merits of Article Two.
And is it the yes, we'll send it back, or the no?
A yes vote. So if you, if they recommend that it goes back and you vote yes, you are agreeing with the recommendation to send it back. If you vote no, you are saying, no, do not send it back. And then the recommend, that motion will be finished, and what we'll then need is a motion to proceed to discuss Article Two, which the planning board tells me they will make.
Thank you. And can I, can I make one more?
Please, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to move the vote, because although some of the content of some of the, the speaking has been technically about sending it back, I think it's been going a little bit too long, and it, it seems like that technicality has been abused. So I'd like to make a motion to move the vote.
Yeah, I think the, the specific action, I know what you're getting at, called for in our bylaws is, is moving the question. Now, what that means in our bylaws is it requires a second. It is, let me just confirm something. It is not, pardon me, let me just look, just getting the details of that motion. I think it is debatable and requires a majority, but the impact is we'd limit debate, we'd limit any speaker to five minutes, and no speaker may speak more than twice. Now, our current process is in our normal rules, we let everyone speak once before anyone gets to speak twice, and then no one can speak a third time without permission of the moderator. So it won't save a lot of time, but we have a motion on the table by Mr. Matthews. If you still want to make that motion, Mr. Matthews?
I think so, because that, that limit would be until we do vote on this article, right?
That's correct. This limit would apply to the recommendation to refer it back only, and then that limit would end if we go on to discuss the article itself. And then I see a second by Mr. Schroff. Okay. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion to, sorry, I'm lost for words. It's, yes, sorry, say again? Yeah, moving the question, pardon me, struggling with lost words. Anyone wish to speak to the motion to move the question? If you could drop your hands if you are not interested in speaking to that? Looks like people do want to speak to moving the question. Okay. Then the next hand I see is Ms. Agostino.
Mr. Moderator, can you just once again confirm what moving the question is going to do? I want to be sure that I understood correctly. Remind me that it would reduce the time of any speaker to five minutes, and they would only be allowed to speak twice? Is that what you said?
Yes. I, you know what? Let me just double-check that, because it's been a bit, it's in the bylaws. Let me just be right back and double-check that point. Thank you for your patience, folks. So a few things. This is, by the way, not, we have a bylaw that is different than town meeting time in other towns, so that's why I was just making sure. So actually, this limiting or extending debate does require a second, which we got it. It is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote, and the implication would be no speaker may speak for more than five minutes, and no speaker may speak more than once, except for the chair of the warrant committee, who can speak at the end of debate to wrap up. Is that clear, Ms. Agostino? I'll take that as a yes. So five minutes, and everyone speaks once, except for the chair of the warrant committee at the end. Okay. With that, I'll move to a vote. This require a two-thirds vote to limit or extend debate. If we could put up the polling question? Well, let's just make sure we've got all our participants in the right spot. Hang on a sec. Mr. Shane, could you put that down for a second? I would like to find out, have we a member who's not identified in the participant pool? Yeah. Yes, would the individual on the phone number ending in zero eight zero, please unmute and identify yourself by name? Again, with the person with the phone number ending in zero eight zero, please unmute yourself and identify yourself by name? If you don't unmute and identify yourself, we'll drop you from the meeting. Okay, could you remove the phone number ending in zero eight zero? Right, thank you. Okay. With that, I know we have questions, but this motion to limit debate here is, is not a debatable motion per our rules. So we'll go to the polls. We're ready for the polls. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. And could we unmute the phones? On the phones, all in favor of the motion to limit debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
We can mute the phones? We have the votes in? Okay, let's put up the results. The motion carries with one hundred and eighty-five yes votes at eighty-two percent and forty no votes at eighteen percent. So with that, Mr. Matthews, you were in the middle of speaking, and you get a rebuttal point. Are you, have you completed your remarks? Your hand is down, so I assume you did. With that, the next member I see is Ms. Bergeron. You're recognized. Ma'am, if you could unmute?
My apologies. I believe that was a mistake.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to Mr. Mulvey.
I don't know how I took that.
Ms. Bergeron, there you go. Very good. Mr. Mulvey, you're recognized. Mr. Mulvey, could you unmute? Mr. Mulvey? Okay, we'll come back to Mr. Mulvey. Ms. King, you're recognized.
Virginia Johnah Hugh King, precinct three. I think we need a discussion of the things that might make the proposed bylaw better, should it go, well, should, if it goes back to the planning board. I, I hope it does. I do wonder if the planning board can in fact make this a better proposed bylaw, as we, it hasn't thus far. I mean, apparently, we've sent it back, but it hasn't addressed the, the issues that the, the body has brought up. So I, I would be very concerned about not having a discussion of what the failings are, the perceived deficiencies are of this article before send, before sending it back, because it will, it will give, it will give fodder for making it a better bylaw that everybody can get behind. Thank you.
Folks, I'm getting a lot of point of orders when people have been speaking for thirty seconds. I'm going to ignore them unless I see something egregious to give our, our members a chance to speak. So with that, we will go to Mr. Mulvey. Would you like another chance? Mr. Mulvey? Nope, okay. Mr. Whiteside, you've already spoken. Ms. Agostino, I think you had a point of order. I'm not sure you spoke to the point of the article. Ms. Agostino, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Diana Tulio Agostino, precinct nine. Just a point. So the unmute box popped up, and then it popped down, so that might be why some of the other people that you tried to recognize might not have spoken up yet. It did return, so I unmuted myself. Thank you very much for this opportunity to, first of all, thank the warrant committee for their recommendation. And I think there is three important words that haven't been discussed in this discussion about referring back, and those three words are referred back to the planning board for further study. I think that's why some people have said, well, what would happen if it was referred back? And I certainly understand this warrant committee, the people that were appointed to it are very diverse in their beliefs and their decision-making process. For them to have taken a hundred percent unanimous position speaks very strongly to the fact that this article should be referred back. The, whether it's referred back or remanded back, we're not sitting here as lawyers. I'm not a lawyer. The warrant committee members are not acting legally, and the TESORA says they both mean the same thing. So I really thank the warrant committee, and no matter who you are, you have to appreciate the endless hours they put into this. I've been a town meeting member for forty years, and during that time, I have never heard that a minority opinion cannot be given. And I mean, I'm reading it on the question and answers. We have before us a recommendation of the warrant committee. We have elected officials on the planning board. It's a three-to-two vote, and when it's a close vote, they're generally, for many, many years, I know when I was on the warrant committee on the select board, there were many minority opinions that were written up. So I appreciate that the question arose and gave the minority planning board members an opportunity to state why they support referring back. So we have a hundred percent of the warrant committee, and we have two of the five members of the planning board to, to return, refer this back for further study. This has been a very, as the chair of the warrant committee said, he's getting five-to-one calls against this article. Referring it back, I think this year is important, because this year, the last two years have not been normal. It's very, there is very limited resident knowledge. It's very, there is very limited resident knowledge. Now, yes, there were hearings and they were on Zoom, and yes, people do talk, but it's not like two years ago, when you sit around your neighborhood discussing these things. I think it's very limited knowledge, and that's why we really need to take the time to study this further. Out of three hundred and fifty-two towns in the state, I believe from everywhere I looked, there were only thirty-plus towns that have such an article. So it's not, it's not the type of article that's been very well studied to even see what's happened when it's been there. So referring it back for further study certainly makes sense. Of those cities and towns that have it, there was some point made about why to refer it back. Milton is like the country. We are so fortunate that we are preserving the country-like atmosphere while we're surrounded by three cities. Boston, Randolph's a town, but Boston, Quincy being two major cities. And that's why further studies, when this type of a bylaw is not across a majority or even twenty-five percent of the cities and towns in the state. I did speak to both the planning board direct, the planning, Town Planner, and the Town Building Inspector or head of the department today. I asked the question-
And ma'am, you've got about a minute left.
Yeah, the question I have is the bylaw cap's at ten units, so everyone thinks that's a stopgap measure. When I asked that of the building inspector, he replied back, and this is in emails, ten-unit limit. If the Attorney General disallows the ten-unit limit, the entire bylaw would be null. However, he noted that that should be a question for Town Council, so that's the first question. And then if it was, and this has to do with referring back for further study, no one seemed to have the answer as to, if you refer it back, that they would then know the answer to this question. They would study it and kind of come up with an answer. And I wholeheartedly support Alex Whiteside's notes, comments, because of deficiencies, the perfect reason for referring back this article. But so if you could get any answer to the question.
I just, I'm sorry. I lost the question in the wording. Just briefly, again?
So if the Attorney General disallows the ten-unit limit, the entire bylaw will be null, was the response I received to the question, which is why I support referring it back. And that's why I was told, the response said, Town Council should answer that.
I'm pretty sure I know the answer to that, but I'll just get an answer from Town Council on the implication. But ma'am, what's that got to do with referring it back, then? That would be an amendment question, I think, in the-
No, no, the issue is that if I'm reading this article and I can't, I don't have an answer to that, then it means it should be referred back for the study, because it's not about, it's something that, it's the basis of the whole argument. How many people have said, oh, no, we don't need to study it anymore, because we have a cap? It was also presented by the Planning Board minority that-
I got you. All right. Town Council? Can you speak to the members' question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Freitag from the Office of Town Council. I can offer the following. Myself and the Director of Planning, Tim Zuinski, spoke with the Attorney General's Office this afternoon, specifically the Department that reviews and approves or denies amendments to bylaws. And we shared with them this article and specifically referenced this provision regarding the cap. The information that we got from the Attorney General's Office was they were not aware of any decisions that they had issued previously that would prohibit such a cap from existing in a bylaw. And second, that if the town meeting were to approve this bylaw with this cap, and upon review at the Attorney General's Office, they, for the first time perhaps, took issue with a cap like this, then the Attorney General's Office would then proceed to analyze the entire article and determine whether or not this cap was essential to it. If upon finding that it was not essential to the article, the Attorney General's Office may simply strike that provision and allow the rest of the article to stand.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I see one citizen who has raised their hand. Ms. Joyce, again, we're trying to limit discussion to the motion to refer this back to the Planning Board rather than the merits of the ADU. With that, if you could state your name and address, and you're limited to five minutes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. My name is Julie Joyce. I'm Precinct Six. I'm on seventy-one, Seventy-two Adam Street. I wanted to just make a couple of quick points about why I feel this should go back to be studied again. I mean, when the Warrant Committee says that, hey, you know, they knock out five different issues that came up and said, these are the, these are the issues, or five or six different ones, and say, this is what we have an issue with, and we have several other people who've come back and said, these are the specific issues. And then we hear, you know, people from the opposing side who have said, well, this keeps getting kicked back. It's, it shouldn't keep getting kicked back. Well, maybe it's getting kicked back, because it needs to be redone, and maybe that needs to be a conversation where people sit down together and say, hey, this is the issue. People want this, other people want that. Let's get together and let's figure out what makes everybody happy. And there shouldn't be an extended amount of time. These people should be able to sit down, get together, and knock this out in something that everybody agrees to. Right now, we sent out a letter, myself and Michael Vaughn, to different precincts regarding this. We had three hundred and fifty people reply in, you know, three days, and most of them horrified. And at least, we had three people who came back and they were for it, but the amount of people who really felt that this was being pushed at them, they didn't have any awareness of it. They're concerned about some of the really loose language and things that had been pushed back again. I think that in order to get this to something that everybody agrees with and is comfortable with, you know, the warrant has to give, which I think they did, a really strong list of issues. I think people need to get that list, go back together, but I mean, it's not ready to be voted on. This isn't something, with the amount of pushback that we got, people are uncomfortable. And if your neighbors are uncomfortable with something to that extent, I don't think it's fair. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, I'll go to Ms. Harrington. You're recognized.
Thank you, Moderator. Can you hear me?
You're pretty faint.
I think it's my, unfortunately, it's my speaker, I think. I'm gonna try to speak up.
If you can get as close to the mic as possible.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
A little better, but loud and close would be great. Thank you.
Okay. I'm a little confused by the amount of discussion that's gone on this evening about the virtue of the article itself, as I thought, really, the point on the floor is discussing whether or not it should be, you know, the motion by the Warrant Committee to refer it back to the Planning Board. So I have a few questions for Mr. Asher, because I would like to, there's some clarification that I need. My first question is that, was there a specific reason that it was referred back to the Planning Board? I remember in Mr. Asher's opening statement, I felt like he said something like, there were people on the Warrant Committee had various, you know, there were various reasons. People had different reasons for referring it back. And I find it odd that the Warrant Committee hadn't come to some sort of consensus about why they were referring it back. So if he could answer that question for me.
Yes, did you have any others as well?
I guess I'd like to know the timeframe for when that happened, and did it get referred back? And did anything, was it, was it the language changed at all? So really, the overall question is, does their referral, has that already been addressed? Or is it, is, that's my question. Has it already happened?
Has, no, has their, let me-
If Mr. Asher could, I think he can, you know, he'll more easily understand.
Okay. I'm not sure I got the second one, but we'll see if Mr. Asher does. Mr. Asher, you there? Can be recognized?
I'll restate again why-
Mr. Moderator, George Asher, Chair of the Warrant Committee. I do not understand the members' question. The simple fact that we made this motion to refer back indicates that we have referred it back. The reasons that we referred it back have included, as I said in my opening statement, our concerns about the different treatments of the ADU. The limitation of the ten ADU permits was of concern to some members. The floor space that was being permitted under the ADUs was another reason. I mean, we don't have a single reason. And very honestly, I will point out that the article that we voted on had a discrepancy in its floor space from one-half versus one-third. It was a typographical error that existed that was corrected in the warrant. So what we voted on technically was a typographical issue, but the common sense that we employed was that if there were errors of that nature, there may have been other errors as well. And apparently, there are other members of the town meeting who have brought up some of them already. Our discrepancies that we also identified were between the calculation of square footage in the different definitions. The, you know, the concept of a, the single-family dwelling unit by right versus the different treatment of the freestanding garage and barn were also another consideration. So there were many issues brought up by the different points of view on the Warrant Committee that pointed us to the conclusion to refer it back. Now, if, if, if the, any of these had been changed before, the decision may have been different. It may not have been unanimous. But I think that the sense of the committee was that there still had to be work on this. And I go back to my, one of my original points, there are a couple, several bylaws that exist governing the division of dwellings in the town of Milton, and they do conflict with one another. We could spend weeks talking about this, but the reality is, it is not harmonious. And the sense of our committee is that more work needs to be done. And, you know, if we're going to talk about work that is being done, let's make it work to the point where we have something to talk about at the Planning Board level. They are the experts. They're the elected group who actually make these determinations. And, and, you know, our view really doesn't change on that. Again, we covered it from very different points of view, just as the town meeting does. But our consideration for different reasons was that this required additional deliberation by the Planning Board for many of the reasons that its Chair, Chair of the Planning Board, Denny Swinson, brought up in much greater detail and with much greater eloquence than I can. I hope that answers your question.
No, it doesn't actually, but thank you.
Well, how, how can I answer it more politely?
George, I'll take care of it, please. Ms. Harrington, what's, would you elaborate your question?
Sure. One comment, you know, I don't know why Mr. Asher is talking about, you know, unharmonious planning bylaws. That seems out of scope for this conversation, so I'm not sure why that's even come up. But my question then is, so did they vote on this specific language in the warrant? Because he also mentioned something about, you know, there was something that was fixed. Did they vote on this? Was there a referral back regarding this specific language? And if it was not regarding this specific language, then how can he, then the Warrant Committee doesn't seem to have taken a vote on this specific language. And why would there be even, why would we even be referring back if the Warrant Committee has not voted on this specific language?
Okay, now I understand the question. Okay, Mr. Asher, before you answer, I've been alerted that a member has asked a question about this, moving the question and limiting debate. Our bylaws, if you're referring to a town meeting time concept or a Robert's Rules of Order, our bylaws prevent this moving the question, meaning stop debate and go to the vote. So our bylaws do not prevent that. What they do is replace it with the, this limiting debate concept that we just described, a five-minute limit, everyone speaks once. So that's as much as our bylaws permit us to move a question in the classic sense. So with that, Mr. Asher, please.
The only difference, what we voted on initially had to rescind back was initially a definitional difference. What we were, what was told to us was a typographical error that referred to one-half of the space of a dwelling unit, and another space was typographically one-third. That was the only difference of which we were aware. And that was corrected in the warrant.
So you did not vote again after your, after the new language that appears in the warrant?
We reconsidered the vote once we saw it, but there was no revote of it.
Then I guess I continue to be confused as to why we're voting on a referral that's not even relative to the language in front of us. That seems just inappropriate.
Okay. The reason, yes, so a couple of things. I'm trying to get to the bottom of Mr. Asher's and your, Ms. Asher's answer to your question. But at the moment, we have a motion on the table, so let me back up. So our, our process is in our bylaws, the Warrant Committee make a recommendation on an article. That recommendation serves as the motion on the floor. So their recommendation is properly worded. It's recommending to refer the article back. So that's why it's a valid motion on the floor. Now, if you think that it was decided incorrectly, vote against the motion to refer. But it's a proper motion on the floor right now.
Moderator, just to clarify, so it's a valid motion, even if it doesn't refer to the actual language that is currently, you know, it's sort of a referral to refer something back that already happened, and the language in front of us is now different?
Yes, it is, because the last vote of the Warrant Committee was what the recommendation that you see printed in the warrant, that's what the citizens were warned about. So that's the motion on the floor. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Harrington. With that, I'm gonna go, I see if, see if we have a citizen. I see we have, actually, Mr. Zuinski may be able to weigh in on something. Mr. Zuinski of the Planning Department, can you comment?
Yeah, I actually, and if we're beyond this, and this commentary isn't necessary anymore, you can feel free to stop me. I just wanted to add a little bit of clarity, color to the issue of that a member earlier brought up regarding the cap and the likelihood or the possibility of that part of the bylaw being perhaps stricken at the Attorney General's level. Town Council, and I did have a conversation with, with a member of the Office of the Attorney General earlier that deals with zoning review, and Town Council did kind of talk about, you know, a bit of that conversation. One other thing that I think is important to note, you know, and when we talk about zoning being reviewed by the Attorney General, it really is case by case. So they're not apt to sort of give us definitive, you know, answers before they actually get an article before them. But I think one thing that I think speaks in favor of confidence that that cap, you know, would stand if it went to the Attorney General is the fact that there are a number of other municipalities in the Commonwealth that have ADU zoning with some form of cap. And I think the Chair of the Planning Board actually referred to a few of them earlier. Dover has language in their ADU bylaw that caps the number of ADUs at ten percent of all single-family homes in the town. Cohasset has the same language, plus a ten-year per, ten permit-per-year cap. Carlisle caps the total number of ADUs town-wide at seventy-five. Sudbury, five percent of all dwelling units. South Borough, five percent of all single-family houses. So again, you know, it's a case-by-case review at the Attorney General's Office on the zoning articles. But the fact that there is precedent in a number of other towns on a variety of different types of cap that are, in fact, more strict than the one that we're proposing, I think should give town meeting a fair amount of confidence that if this article passes and needs to be reviewed by the Attorney General, that that, that provision will remain intact. So I just wanted to add that, that little bit of information for folks.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll go to Ms. Anderson. Ma'am, you're recognized. Ms. Anderson, you there? April Anderson? Ms. Anderson, can you see the unmute button? Okay, well, up there you go.
Hi, sorry, Mr. His, that was covered. April Anderson, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. I'm gonna keep my comments very brief, because I know we're already getting tired, and we haven't even gotten to the actual presentation of the Planning Board that put this article forward. But I would like to make two comments about the recommendation of the Warrant Committee. The two things that I'm hearing is, one, this requires further study, and I would just like to inform the town meeting that this has been studied for two decades. First appeared in a community development report for the town in two thousand and four, again in two thousand and six, again in two thousand and fourteen, again in two thousand and fifteen, and again in two thousand and twenty. These are housing experts and zoning experts that were hired by the- These are housing experts and zoning experts that were hired by the town, advising the town on what we should do to improve our zoning. So this is not a new concept, has been discussed at many, many, many public meetings. Does everyone in town have the opportunity to participate in those? Absolutely. They've all been publicly noticed, and if people were unaware of them, you know, it's, it's unfortunate. But this was discussed at length last year, sent to Town Meeting, sent back to the Planning Board, and again discussed at many public meetings this year that were all advertised. So I, I don't agree that this requires further study. There's plenty of experts who have looked at this. The Planning Board, again, is a group of experts intended to advise the town on land use policy, and that has recommended this article. So I'm very much looking forward to the presentation. The other point was that this article is not harmonious with the rest of our zoning. And I would have to say that as someone with expertise in zoning, reading the Milton zoning bylaw, nothing is harmonious. That argument could apply to any article that this planning board puts forward. Frankly, the zoning is kind of a mess. We're very much underperforming in our, in our land use policy. And that has what, is what led us to the 40Bs, as a prior speaker said. So I think that the argument that this is not harmonious, this article with other parts of our zoning, is an argument that could apply to absolutely any zoning article that's put forward. If there was an effort to rewrite the zoning as whole, I would be very much in favor of that. But that's not an article, that's not an article before us tonight. So I do not want to see this referred back to the Planning Board yet again. There are a lot of experts who have recommended this. I'm looking forward to hearing the presentation of the Planning Board telling us why they wrote it the way that they did. And that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, we'll go to Ms. Varela, ma'am, you're recognized.
Hi, thank you, Ms. Moderator, Varela Varela, Precinct 8. I want to recommend that we vote no on the recommendation to put it back to the Planning Board. I want to reference the excellent statement made just by Ms. Anderson, also by Mr. First, who are also previous members of the Planning Board. And I think what April just said about the many years this has been in the works, and to a former Town Meeting Member who said that people don't know about this. You know, we're all busy, we're all citizens, we're all working jobs, we're all raising families. I understand that, but if they're not paying attention, then, you know what, too bad. Then run for, then they need to run for Town Meeting. We are the Town Meeting Members representing them. If many of you have gotten comments now that they are alerted to it, then it needs to be debated by us on the Town Meeting Floor. I also think that due to the fact that the Select Board, and I know it's a split vote on the, on the Planning Board, but it still is a 3-2 vote, which it passes, and it is a formal recommendation by the elected board that we should therefore respect those two areas, which are more special than what the warrant committee can recommend and the amount of hours that they put in analyzing it compared to the Planning Board, which is their specialty. And as a former member of an elected board in recent years, dealing with the warrant committee, can speak to the fact that, you know, if you're on the elected board and you're spending the hours on the article issues and recommendations, that the warrant, the current warrant committee sometimes, I don't feel, is putting the hours they shouldn't, they should put into reaching out individually, having a rep to the Planning Board and other committee members to really getting down to it, so that when you have the one or two or three monthly meetings that you have, that you really can get into the nitty-gritty of it. So I think we need to listen to the overall Planning Board recommendation and the Select Board's recommendation, that this is a no vote to go back to the Planning Board, and it should be debated on, on the floor of Town Meeting by us, the elected representatives. Thank you.
Mr. Mullen, you're recognized.
Peter Mullen, Precinct 2. As I understand the question before the body, it's whether we should refer this back to the Planning Board, and that will be decided by a majority vote. I'd like to get the answer to two other questions before deciding how to vote on that. If we vote no, and the, and the, the article is up before the body, does it require a two-thirds vote, as most zoning matters do? Or is, under the, the recent legislation that was enacted, can it be decided by a majority vote? And then after the answer to that question, I'd like to also know whether or not we have a provision in our bylaws which says that if a, if the Planning Board sends an article to the Town Meeting and the article is defeated, then there's a two-year hiatus before the Planning Board can send another article on the same topic? Whether that would apply, whether it was two-thirds required or just a simple majority?
Thank you, your question's very clear. Yes, I did discuss that vote with Town Council. And you're right, there is some statutes or a master general law that permits some housing-related articles to pass with a majority. According to the Town Council's research, this has sufficient, let's call it tripwires, that kick it into the two-thirds category. So yes, if we vote no on the motion to refer, and the Planning Board makes a motion to adopt Article 2 as written and it's seconded, and that it would need a two-thirds vote to pass. On your second point, yes, I'll just ask Town Council to help me confirm, but I am fairly certain that if we get to actually voting on Article 2 and it fails, I believe there's a two-year hiatus before it can be reconsidered by Town Meeting. I'll just say, Town Council, can you just confirm that? I think that's my recollection. Pardon me? You're just walking in my door, just a minute. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mullen, I just confirmed what Town Council, he said, yes, subject to some, some limited limitations, it's a two-year hiatus before it could be sent back to Town Meeting.
Mr. Moderator, then I would urge the members of the body to vote yes on the question of referring it back to the Planning Board. I can't remember an article in the recent past for which I've received more negative comments, negative literature in preparation for a Town Meeting. If it's only gonna require a one-third of the body to defeat it, I would suggest to the people that have, that support the article that you may not want to have the Planning Board out of action for two years on this topic. And that, as I understand it, there's a citizens petition that's been filed for the annual Town Meeting in two months that would address this topic. And that we might well want the Planning Board to have an article before the annual Town Meeting as well. We certainly want them to be able to express their views and opinions on any pending article. So I guess I'd urge a yes vote on the pending question, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to, I'm going to speakers, I see some folks that had their hands raised that have spoken twice. Mr. Matthews made a motion and not spoke to the point on the article, so Mr. Matthews, I'll recognize you next.
Thank you, again, Scott Matthews, Precinct 10. I was actually coming in for one point, but I really wanted to follow up on a comment that a previous Town Meeting Member made when they were asking for clarification from the warrant committee. In summary, it sounded to me as if the decision to send it back was technically based on a typo, which has been fixed in this warrant, right? And we've seen time and time again in the past that when there has been a decision by, a recommendation by the warrant committee on a, the printed article, if there are changes that comes in, like one of those special seats, we get a revote by the warrant committee, because there is different language. And to the point that the previous member was trying to make, that process was not done. So I know that it was stated or summarized that we're voting on the warrant committee's proposal of what was in, is in the warrant, but it doesn't sound like that was done. And it feels like a bit of a waste of our time to be voting on some, on a recommendation that is stale. And that it was not even attempted to have another vote taken on this new language. Because it sounded like the, the Chair of the Warrant Committee himself said that if a vote was taken, it probably would not have been unanimous as it was before. Thus suggesting that another vote should have been taken based on the updated language. Now, I, I know we can say that we can always just send this vote no and send this forward, but I feel like we shouldn't have to do that to get around a process not being taken. My other comment was that I just wanted to come to, to put out a little bit of calm to some of the comments that I've heard, that quite a few speakers have been speaking to the comments that were made by the Chair of the Warrant Committee, that part of what was shown that this article probably needs to be sent back is the number of people that have commented on it. And I don't think that the sheer number should be enough. It's the content of what those comments were. Like if I go to Amazon to buy something, I'm not gonna be swayed by the fact that there are 5,005 stars. I'm gonna be swayed by the content of that, of those comments. So I, I think we should focus more on what was actually wrong, what was voted on, and what would, what was being suggested be sent back? And it doesn't exactly sound like that debate was done by the warrant committee, right? There's some degree was that bait in terms of that's out there and there's different opinions. But that debate did not actually get put into the recommendation for what we're looking at. So I, I just wanted to raise that.
Would you like to enter from the, the warrant committee, or you were just making a statement?
I, I'm making a statement, which is a summary of the answer that they already gave. So based on that, I'm, I'm suggesting a no vote to, to vote, because I agree with other speakers who said that this really deserves to be debated on. And it, it just feels like an obstruction of the process in order to send this back. And I think that we should actually debate on this in order to try to vote on this article. So, thank you.
Thank you, understood. Okay, with that, we'll go to Mr. Hart, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Chris Hart, Precinct 5. I've heard, I echo the previous speaker's comments, and I, and I just want to really emphasize this for, for the body. The Planning Board voted on this article in December. The warrant committee considered that language. It then sent it back to the Planning Board. That recommendation to send it back is what is in the warrant. That is what we learned from the Chair tonight. It was then revoked by the Planning Board in February. The warrant committee never looked at that and never made a recommendation of it. So for those who are arguing for the motion and are relying on unanimity, that reliance is misplaced. And we should vote no on this motion and stop delaying this for years and years and years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll go to Mr. Funling.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Jay Funling, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. My comments, I think, are similar to the, the speaker who just preceded me. I would like to say that the comments in the warrant say that this was sent back because it was out of scope and would require reposting of notice and rehearing. And the comment cites, in light of the subject matter of the article still being pending, the warrant committee voted unanimously. And this specific reason, and only this reason, is given for the unanimous vote to send it back, because it was premature for the warrant committee to vote at that time. So I would like to ask, did the reposting and rehearing by the Planning Board happen? And then did the warrant committee then meet again to give their recommendations, as is required by the bylaws? We depend on the warrant committee to meet as a committee, to vote as a committee, and to give us their recommendations as a committee. If it was reposted and re-heard, I hope the warrant committee then, as a body, voted on this and can tell us what their recommendation is. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Swenson, can you answer the first question, if the Planning Board re-discussed and revoked after that issue arose? Ms. Swenson, Planning Board, are you there? Or Ms. O'Donnell, Planning Board? Oh, you're trying to promote her up?
Yes, Moderator His, the, so there was a version in December, mid-December. There were, I think, changes made. And then we had a final version. We presented it to the warrant committee in anticipation of our public hearing. During the public hearing, one small typo, changing one-half, changing, I'm sorry, changing one-third to one-half to be consistent in another part of the article. That was the only change. That was made in February. So the article that the warrant committee voted on was only changed by a typographical number.
Understood. Mr. Asher, are you there? Looks like Mr. Asher may have stepped away. Mr. Asher, if you could answer.
No, I'm here, I'm here, Mr. Moderator. We're, we are conferring with the warrant committee right now. So if you bear with me a few minutes, we will be reporting back shortly. Do you need me to answer a question for you right now?
Yeah, the specific question is, after the Planning Board posted their public notice, and they made the change in the typographical error and then voted to approve, did that now modified language with that typographical error fixed, go back to the warrant committee, into the warrant committee, debate that revised language?
The revised language with that typo was, was, was acknowledged. I do not, we are in the middle now of discussing whether we want to, want, want to take another vote based on that. I don't know if that, in fact, will change things, but if you bear with me, I'll be back to you shortly.
Okay, so it sounds like, Mr. Asher, you did not take another vote based on that typographical error. So that's what I heard just said.
I think so, that's accurate.
Thank you. Then I'm gonna move on to Mr. Johnson, you're recognized. Mr. Johnson, you were here, did you drop your hand? I guess you dropped your hand. Okay, then we'll go to Mr. Zulus. Johnson is back? Okay, pause, let's go to Mr. Johnson, you're recognized.
Okay, I was on mute, is what I was trying to do, sorry. Scott Johnson, Precinct 9, Town Meeting Member. I have a question for Mr. Freitag to clarify, if in fact the AG in his conversation with him said that no one had challenged cap limits on a bill of this nature.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
Depending on his answer, I will have a further question. I also want to state that I have received more people that are against this motion as a Town Meeting Member than ever before, too.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Freitag, can you join us? Mr. Freitag, are you there? Mr. Frytag, are you there? Pardon me, let me go nudge him next door. Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry, the Mr. Frytag is just on a phone call. Can I just pause your question? And as soon as Mr. Frytag is available, come back and we'll answer your question.
Absolutely, that's fine.
Thank you, sir. With that, it'll go to Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Sula's Precinct Three Town Meeting Member, Member of the Select Board. It is our normal practice, Mr. Moderator, for the Chair to speak on behalf of the board, but the Chair in this case on this article has invited invited the other members to speak. And so I've taken her up on that invitation. Mr. Moderator, it sometimes seems that if we had Milton Town meeting back in the time of Moses, there would be no Ten Commandments. And that would we we would still be referring it back to the Almighty for further study. We are now engaged in a filibuster that is preventing substantive discussion of this article. My thought is to vote no on the recommendation of the warrant committee, take the next hour to discuss the substance of this article and then vote it up or down. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Excellent. Well, Mr. Frytag is right here. Mr. Frytag, could you stand still? Mr. Johnson, he's here. We have an answer to your question on during this conversation with the Attorney General. Has anyone ever challenged the limit on A D U articles? You can you can speak right on the phone here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Frytag again from the Office of Town Council. That that question wasn't asked. We simply asked if there were any decisions that found that the cap was not permissible. And the answer was, no, they couldn't point us in the direction of any decisions that they had ever offered that said that a cap like that was not permissible.
Could we unmute Mr. Johnson or Mr. Johnson unmute yourself?
There we go. Okay. Okay, so if there were no decisions, that probably means that nobody's challenged it. Is that correct?
That's an assumption.
That's an assumption, he says, so.
Right, okay. And to my next question is then, how can the assumption be made by the town planner that the that because other towns have a cap and it's never been, there's never been a decision made that in fact this be a safe that this will remain in the language or not be struck down by the Attorney General or a court in the future?
I will ask that question of Mr. Truinsky.
But thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, the the answer is that you can't prove a negative. So Mr. Johnson may be right in speculation. I I think that, again, the fact that there are multiple towns that have a similar cap and and our knowledge of whether or not those have been challenged, I don't know if they have been. But but if a challenge were to arise, the fact that there is a precedent in multiple other towns for, you know, multiple years that have gone through both town meeting in those towns and a review by the Attorney General. You know, again, not being a lawyer, I can't, you know, I can't say, you know, with any certainty. But I but I do think that, you know, given the facts that we do have that that again, you know, I I think there's, you know, these bylaws function in these other towns. You know, and so again, based on the information that we have, I I would have confidence that there's enough precedent out there to point to that, you know, the the cap would 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 probably stand.
But in essence, we cannot say for for a fact if this were challenged that it it would stand, correct? That's a speculation.
I think Mr. Truinsky answered that, Mr. Johnson, that it is a can't prove the negative. So I think that, so thank you. By the way, Mr. Whiteside and Ms. King, you've already spoken once during this debate. So per the current limit debate, I won't be able to recognize you again. You'll get if we if this goes on, we can do that another time. I'll recognize Mr. Neely now.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Rick Neely, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. And I recommend that this article be referred to the Planning Board for further study. I support the recommendation of the Warren Committee. And the reason for that is that, going back a year ago at the annual town meeting and at Planning Board meetings, I've been asking the Planning Board to size this article up and to give the town meeting members, the Warren Committee and the residents of this town an estimate of the demand for this particular article. So that we have some sense of the 7,000 plus single-family homes, how many potentially would be eligible for this or would take advantage of this? We need to know, for example, what's the population increase? What's the impact on school-aged children? We have a school building committee that is working on designing a school. It seems to me we ought to have some consideration of the number of children that might be added by adopting an A D U article. We also need to know, for example, what's the impact on the rest of the town infrastructure by having some estimate of the overall population estimate? So the Planning Board has not come in with that information. Every time you ask that information, the only thing we get is that the M A P C estimated three houses. I don't find that believable. I don't accept that. And I think it would not hurt to provide the town residents and the town meeting members and the Warren Committee some understanding based upon a survey or a study or consultation with real estate people in the local area to come up with some estimate. So for those reasons, I support the recommendation of the Warren Committee to send this back to the Planning Board. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have two more hands, three hands for first time, Ms. Kelly, Mr. Callahan, and Ms. Benson. Ms. Kelly, you're recognized. If you could unmute. Ms. Kelly, you there? There you go. I almost had you. Ms. Kelly, can you unmute? Okay, we'll have to come back to Ms. Kelly in a minute. Why don't we go to and yes, a member has asked if they spoke before the limitation. Given that some of the members spoke up to 10 minutes, I'm imposing the one-speaker limit during this portion since we've been going on at some length. So next, I'll recognize Ms. Callahan and keep an eye out for Ms. Kelly unmuting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Callahan, Precinct Four. I'm not a lawyer, first of all. And but I'm on the state's website. And in the Q and A section about the new zoning act, under the newly amended Section Five of the Zoning Act, zoning ordinance or bylaw can be enacted by a simple majority vote. And then it lists the reasons. Reason number three is a bylaw that was would allow accessory dwelling units either within the principal dwelling or within a detached structure on the same lot as of right. So I was, I read that because of the previous discussion where I think it was referred to that Mr. Frytag's opinion was that there was a number of tripwires, I believe was the phrase used that caused this to be a two-thirds vote, not a simple majority. As somebody in the housing field, certainly the spirit of that act is for these types of amendments to be simple majority. So I I would like to hear from Mr. Frytag if if it's possible about what what he's referring to in terms of tripwires. If it is the cap, why he thinks the cap is kicking this into a two-thirds majority? So I'd just like to hear from Mr. Frytag on the subject if possible. Thank you.
Mr. Frytag? You're on mute, Mr. Frytag.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Frytag from the Office of Town Council. There are certain provisions in this zoning amendment bylaw that require special permits for A D Us. The requirement for special permits for some A D Us that's in, for instance, in buildings that are not part of the primary residence or in addition to the primary residence are outside of the categories that were provided in the fair or, excuse me, the new housing legislation that permitted zoning amendments that zoning amendments to be made by a simple majority vote versus a two-thirds majority vote. So in other words, the things that we've identified, like the cap, they fall outside of the scope of amendments that may be voted by a simple majority. And so when you combine those pieces, like the cap component of this bylaw with the pieces that only require a majority vote, the end result is that therefore the whole article must now pass by a two-thirds majority. And there are other specific pieces of the the bylaw amendment that fall outside of the simple majority type of situations in terms of the quantum of vote that's necessary. And I I would I would ask perhaps the Director of Planning to speak to those. He is an excellent handle on exactly which pieces of the bylaw amendment fall outside of that that particular realm.
Perhaps before I go there, Mr. Callahan, was that satisfactory?
I guess it it I I guess I I'm looking for more creative interpretation that might allow us to have a portion of this subject to a simple majority vote and and maybe other things that that fall with outside two-thirds. But I I I'd love to hear from the town planner on this, too.
Okay, Mr. Truinsky.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And 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 I do I do appreciate and understand Mr. Callahan's confusion. Because I think the way that that housing choice legislation was written, especially as regards A D Us, is a little confusing and kind of funny. But the I I I think that the cap issue is something that is that is uncertain. And, you know, there's a question as to whether or not something could be considered as of right if there's an outright prohibition on the 11th permit. So that's something that's a little bit unknown. But I think the thing that we do know is there are two provisions in the housing choice legislation regarding A D Us that would require a a simple majority quantum of vote. And those are A D Us in a detached structure by special permit, which this article has. So that component of it would be a simple majority. The other one is A D Us in an existing dwelling by right, which this article has in a partial fashion. But because the article deals with sort of two types of A D U within the existing structure, one within the existing footprint, which this article allows by right, and one in an addition in the existing structure, which it allows by special permit, because you're mixing the special permit requirement with the existing structure. It kind of, it's, you know, I I use the term poison pill, just it's a little exaggerated, but i- it's the thing that kind of spoils the simple majority kind of nature of those other things. You can't mix elements that require a simple majority with elements that require a two-thirds majority. So if you've got one element that requires two-thirds, the whole article requires two-thirds unless those elements are separated and voted on separately or eliminated so that the only ones that remain require a simple majority. So really, the thing that is the the tripwire, to use the moderator's term, is the fact that you you're required to get a special permit for an addition on an existing dwelling. And and that's as clear as we can make it. So I hope I hope that that answers your question, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Truinsky. In order to keep things moving, Ms. Margaret Kelly, would you like to speak? Can you unmute? Your hand is still right. There you are.
No, thank you. The answers have been given to me. Thank you.
With that, we'll go to Ms. Mary Kelly. And her hand is down. Okay, at this point, I only have members who have already spoken once. And I see no other first-time speakers. So sticking with the limit debate, we'll now just close with the final comment from the warrant committee and then go to a vote. So, Mr. Asher, could you, if you are there or have nothing, let us know if you have anything to add? I don't see Mr. Asher. Okay.
Oh, I'm here.
There you are. Okay.
I want to just raise, I I want to raise a couple of points. First off, there was a process issue that the warrant committee was reviewing this before the public hearing, the second public hearing was given by the Planning Board. So the view that we had was based on the information that we had before the public hearing. We sent our comments to the Planning Board. They chose to fix the typographical error. We did review the actual text at our meeting on Monday and determined that our recommendations stood. So in reality, we did see the change in the text. So for those of you who are concerned that we didn't vote on the text, we actually saw the text. We saw it after the fact. The fact that the warrant committee a- and Town Council has validated this for me. I also should say that we did our level best to take into consideration all of the concerns. It was not just a typographical error that we're concerned about. It was the substance of this that the Planning Board presented in the in the discussion that we had that brought forward our concerns that this needed to be further debated by the Planning Board and have considerations made, not dissimilar to the ones that the Chairman, Chairwoman Swenson made. So I also will take issue with with certain members who have questioned the integrity of our process and our discussion and our debate. The warrant committee meets often several times a week. And it's not a question of us not devoting attention to it, to our issues. We take it extraordinarily seriously. We've been talking about it this evening while this has been going on. The discussions that we raise are substantive. No, we're not elected members. We're not experts all the time, but the questions that we ask are diverse. They're penetrating. And they often do move questions and move points to the to the degree that we feel that we are additive to the process. So I I will speak in defense of this group, of this process, of this committee. And I I would honestly invite any of you to become members of the warrant committee and see exactly what's entailed or even to dial into our meetings when they happen. So you can understand that we just don't sit around and shoot the breeze. So I stand by our recommendation at this point and will leave it to you to make the determination as the governing body of the town.
Thank you, Mr. Asher. By the way, I was informed by a member here, if you haven't seen the Zoom admin functionality. Folks on the phone have difficulty raising their hands, unlike the folks who are on computers. Mr. Mike Kelly has sent in a note saying he would like to, since I did not even see him on the list before. Mr. Kelly, I'm going to recognize you for five minutes and then I'm going to go for a vote. So, Mr. Mike Kelly, if you could, we could unmute you. You unmute yourself. Thank you.
Do you hear me?
Yes, I do.
Okay, my name is Mike Kelly, 132 Whittier Road, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine, and former Planning Board member. And I would like to agree with the warrant committee that this motion, with their motion to send back to the Planning Board. The reasons behind my decision are that I know there's a citizens article out there. I know there's presently a special permit for, I'll call it like in-law apartments. And I'd like to see, like some people have kind of indicated, I'd like to see these ideas melded together and get a more unanimous consensus if possible. I did use the special permit quite a few years ago. My father passed away and my mother moved in with us. And I found it a very easy situation. Not only was the zoning Board of Appeals amenable to the idea, but they were happy to suggest that they'd like to see more people come forward and do that to their elderly people. So I I found it a very, you know, unlaborious process. So I'd like to see something happen where, again, the special permit that exists, citizens article, and maybe the article here that exists, melded together to get a more, you know, total consensus. This is a very important article, I believe. It it it's a significant change in my mind, being on the planning board. And I, again, I'm just trying to get it to a better consensus. It would be great if the Planning Board came back unanimous. I put, I spent five years on the Planning Board from, I believe it was 12, 2012 to 2017. And I never recall. And I never recall an accessory dwelling unit article coming before us. Many people keep saying it's come up and up and up again. I never recall it coming before us and being sent back to us. And like I said, I went through the special permit process, being involved with it. I'm sure I would have remembered it. I also like to add that the five years I spent there, Mr. Whiteside was on the planning board, and I believe he did write every, every bylaw that we either amended or wrote. He was the author. So, I put great weight in his wealth of knowledge, in his years and experience, in his legal mind. And if he says the deficiency is, yeah, again, I put great weight in it. So, again, I'd just like to agree with the warrant committee, this should go back for further study. And again, I don't know where this, it's been going on and on for years, comes from because I spent five years there. And when this came up, it was the first time I've heard it. And I appreciate you allowing me to figure out how to get on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Okay, folks, with that, I'm going to move to the vote. So, Zoom admin, if you could prepare that. Don't put the poll up yet. I'll just explain again what we're voting on and what your votes mean. So, the recommendation is printed in the warrant is what we're voting on. So, it's recommended that the article be referred to the planning board for further study. If you vote yes, we will refer this back to the planning board, and I will then move to adjourn town meeting. If you vote no, town meeting will continue, and I will likely move on to the merits of Article 2. This requires a majority vote since it's a process vote. So, with that, can we put up the poll? We're making sure everyone is in. Okay. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. Could we unmute the phones? On the phones, all in favor of the recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
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 Did I count five? Can we try that? I think my team says five. Thank you. Any knows? On the phone? I'm sorry. Just a minute? Okay, folks, I need to identify some numbers on the phone. So, Madam Clerk, ending in 494, is that the first one? So, phone number ending in 494, would you identify yourself, please?
Kevin Donahue.
Kevin Donahue, Madam Clerk?
Correct. Kevin C. Donahue.
Kevin C. Donahue. Got it. Phone number 080, Madam Clerk, is that next? Could you identify yourself?
Francis Marisi.
Thank you, sir. And phone number ending in 997, could you identify yourself? That's Mike Kelly. We got Mike. Okay, everybody's identified. Thank you. Okay, we've got everybody identified properly. All right, could you put up the poll results? So, the motion refers back. It's 120 yes at 53%, 106 no at 47%. So, the recommendation is adopted, and Article 2 is sent back to the planning board. With that, we have no further articles for tonight. I'll entertain in the chat a motion to adjourn our spring town meeting. Ms. Agostino moves to adjourn. Is there a second? They're so moved. Can we put up the poll? All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. Can we unmute the phones? On the phone, all in favor of motion to adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. We can mute the phones. People are still voting? Okay, people stopped voting. All right, we put up the results. And yes, it passes 176 votes, 86%, 29 votes, 14% no. So, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for a difficult discussion. I think you should all be proud of your behavior. And I'm proud of, to be your moderator. With that, thanks, team, for helping to run these complex Zoom-based town meetings. They are more difficult than you would realize. Thanks, folks.